Good morning again. Othumela ngabe. Le kai ba tu ba, ba Palaburua. Ba Palaburua.
How are you people of Palaburua?
I'm saying ba Palaburua because we are in ba Palaburua.
Kibunlebele ba Palaburua kwa remo ba Palaburua.
Kyatiba urolejuadi mas palangjiri fa 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 paning marakabaka lauri. Kasaha esu, halit leka haseminyah. Kamuka linale ba ba hasemi.
I know that you are from different municipalities. But in our culture, when you have visited the Seminyah home state, you all belong to the Seminyah clan.
So akira ba Palaburua, kira lelona.
When I say ba Palaburua, I embrace you all.
Dolo ngurena hanawuri, leka thoma, leka morero o rote jempa.
We are going to start with the mission for the day, the main aim of our being here.
Ilawakurisungula ndirolo.
We want to start our program.
We are going to request that all of us will stand up and we request men to remove their head.
Ikombela leshaku inkwene iima, ikombela ba vanauna kuwa basu sashit lokosavona.
And then we be led by the sound to sing the national anthem.
Iwe ilanzele risa, buyimbele rilebzi ngatapzirkona jarisi murarishaka.
Ele reitla be rubula kapano ye, se mocho.
Opening this session.
Thank you very much.
Kenzila shnene.
Li bitolaka kina machweni Rosina Seminyah.
My name is Machweni Rosina Seminyah.
Ki modula stulawa committee, ya Human Settlement?
I am the chairperson for the Committee of Human Settlement.
Kina kitla ngutza maisha moshumo o.
I am the one who's going to be leading all the proceedings for the day.
Amongst us, we have the speaker of the municipality of Ba Palaburua.
Eschkar kai na enashpikara, shamaspa lawaba ba Palaburua?
Mister Nyat. Mabunda.
Mister Mabunda.
Mister Mabunda, reklamutu ngwalena, can you just take a bow?
Mister Mabunda, we are in your area, can you just take a bow?
As team from parliament.
Tani shipanuksoka parlamente.
Let me say, we are from the Parliament of the Republic of South Africa.
Yuhuma ika parlamentia tikor Afrika zonga?
We are members of parliament.
Isirosa parlamente.
As members of parliament, we are accompanied by the team that support us.
Tani isirosa parlamente, eleketu shipanuleshi sekete laku?
The technical team that support us, I'm going to ask them to rise so that they take a bow.
Shipanushabu take nikleshi sekete laku, tawakombeleba iima?
Malatswa oye. You can't hear us. We have the translation team.
Enashpanushabu onzulushi?
The translation team that translate in zonga.
Shipanushabu onzulushi, leshingata onzulushai, shitzonga?
Niyamutwa wabulabula.
We can hear him speaking.
We have a translation team in Sipeidi.
Enashpanushabu onzulushi rimera Sipeidi?
Kinta telemekuane.
Tatana lebekuane?
Ba ilunghur ne ba bereka gore diya tchobela, la itiba rodiya tchobela. And then we have the translator on Sindebele.
Enamunzulushi si isindebele?
And then we have sign languages.
We also have Mister Papo.
Mister Papo, who's a translator for sound.
For Sipeidi.
Oh, Sipeidi. Mister Lemekwan, itule tule. The sign language is.
Ena bakonzulusha is sign language?
I'm reminded that the Sipeidi team, they are more than one, we have Mister Papo.
Nlektundushuwe niku team ya Sipeidi, ba tu la uwe italeba na tatana Papo?
Tatana Papo, lekanu yema, bale bona. I, the Republic of South Africa recognize all languages.
Tikor Afrika zonga, retakilanchokwintinzi mi inkwato?
And all languages are important and recognized by the Parliament of the Republic of South Africa.
Tinzi mi inkwatinankoka nasonatikiruancho kweni parlamentia Afrika zonga?
But usually when we arrive in the meetings, we want to check the dominant language so that other translators should not translate for the purpose of translating.
Kambe lukufika anda wini iranga ekambisi sari rimile ribulaburua kasunene, leshaku ba onzulushiba ngwane bangaka onzulushintseana?
When I'm asking who are speaking zongas Sipeidi, I'm not undermining you.
Logonibutsa kui ba man babalabla kshitzonga kumbes Sipeidi, animitakili e hansi?
It's because we want to save time and allocate translators that people who are in the meeting will understand.
Emakaku ilawakushaisankari, iwe iweka ba onzulushibare rimi, lavabanla bangala meetinging bangatakotakua tukwati sisa.
So can I check how many of you speak zongga in this wall?
Nengakamba leshaku ibangan ni bangui nambalabla kshitzonga la olweni?
How many of you speak Sipeidi in this wall?
Iban gani bangui nambalabla kshipeidi la olweni?
Don't repeat the hands so that I can then see.
Enga imisma woko kambi, relesha kui takotakua ambanisa?
How many of you speak Chivenda?
Iban gani babalabla kshivenda?
How many of you speak Ndebele?
Iban gani babalabla kandewele?
How many of you speak Africans?
Iban gani babalabla kusibunu?
No, but you are raising for the second time.
Oge mi imisara mbiroko.
But you are comfortable with the other languages.
Kambe matituisisatinzi militingwa?
I know that in Limpopo, sometimes because we are integrated society, community. I know ba tu vale ba namakhale. Ba shikwa ba shitu wa shichangani ba shikwata kushubulabula, aniri? Kyatiba uro ba tu balulekani, libo na ba hona obolelasisutuka, ne ba filaleba sutu ba mu namakhale, iwe lele anyalela anakiri? So I'm going to request that we then have the translator of the Shangane because nakitlo zwa kaleis sutu.
Nda kombe leshaku ibana munzulushi warimera shitzonga, ekwa minanta katana shisutu?
So that we don't leave any other person behind.
Lesha kui ingasi ibanwa e hantle?
But please, if you don't understand ufilahuri riausia, just raise the hands, we'll then allocate the translator to you.
Logomengasituisisimtua inga kumisia e hantle, mengaimisaboko kutani itaminika translator kume munzulushware rimi?
Because the importance of these members who are here is to listen to your views.
Ekubankoka uashiro leshishingala, ekuingisela ma wonelo yanguina?
I've indicated that my name is Machweni Rosina Seminyah, the chairperson of the Portfolio Committee on Human Settlement.
Senu komisile vitramina, tani mutshamoashituluwa committee, leila ngutakwe katama katama tsamelia ba aki?
We have members of the committee amongst us on this table.
Enashiro shakomiteshkar kai na latafleni?
From my left, we have an advocate, Masuta.
Esmatzine advocate Masuta?
Masuta wa bauma e Limpopo, na wona. Eh, eh, houten, eh, houting. Amkunfusindetranslators. Yes. Eh, derder Masuta utwa Limpopo, le houting.
Mister Masuta is from Limpopo and houting?
We have Honorable Emma Powell, who is coming from Western Cape.
Renali mutompe ri Emma Powell wa chong Western Cape?
We have on my right hand side Honorable Mohoto, who's from Northwest.
Eh, kagula ujana le mutompe ri Mohoto wa chong Northwest?
Barawo woni, I know they're going to complain, they want to see you. We have Honorable Seki Mahatlatseki utuako houting.
Renali mutompe ri Mahatlatseki utuako houting?
Eh, kimo tuwa utualeko Blumfontein.
Utuakapeli Blumfontein?
Eh, go FreeStata. And then we have Mesu Sifai, who's from Eastern Cape.
We've got Mesu Sifai from the Eastern Cape.
We have apologies from other members who could not be with us. Our committee is represented by people coming from South Africa. We are South African committee ourselves.
Renali malukwama, we achwang, aylongu ri, renali, di, 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 di swarego, cha bona cha raba, balitukufika, feela. Malukwakumiti arakamuka, kima Afrika boora, ke ba tu wako choguno Afrika boora?
Each and every province is represented in our committee, we are lucky. Because other committees, they are not like us.
Di province siche kama kaka chona, tinaleke medi, kama kara ba tu walichimu. Renali ma tsaatsi, biyaka keli uro ri. Di komiti chedi ngwakangeti bala ba tu, ba udi province kama kago sana lirina.
So these are our members.
Ba kima lukwari na?
Kasipeidi barri mu yeng, le shawala mu yeng lebiya kimu ngrai.
In Sipeidi, they say the welcoming of the guest is done by the person who's been visited, the owner of the house.
Dolo rekochia saba kase, ukumbela tatani Mabunda. Are, are, are amukele.
We're going to take this time and ask Mister Mabunda to welcome us?
Tatana Mabunda.
Mister Mabunda?
Abshen.
Good morning.
Tchobela. To the chairperson.
Eka mutshamoashitulu?
Me Rosina.
Manana Rosina?
And your team, Mister Ntseki, advocate Masuta, Miss Sifai, Miss Powell, and Miss Mahoto.
Nashipanushangwina yunkwacho?
And your parliamentary staff that are present today.
Navatiri bale parlamentia, lavangakona namuntla?
Our councillors that were leading ourselves, Durham Singh, those which are present today, both Warden PR.
Ba councilloraba ina, lavanbarangila kala bangakona namuntla, ba ti ward na ti PR?
Ward committees and community members, those which are present here today.
The committee that ti ward, nava aki lavangakona namuntla?
Receive our greetings, good morning, Abshen.
Rishile ekangwina?
Um, nteruami na olovisne nanggopu.
My job is very simple.
Ekutandam amkeela.
Is to welcome you.
Eka this parliamentary engagement.
Eka ntsamoluwa parlamente?
We are in Ba Palaburua municipality.
Me leka maspa lawaba ba Palaburua?
In Lulekani township.
Eh, lokishinda Lulekani?
In Lulekani community hall.
Eh, olweni yava akiya Lulekan?
We're saying we've opened our arms for you.
Eh, furlemabokiya ina, ime amkeela?
So that this part of the country also.
Lesha kui shpimulisha tikonashona?
Is honored with such engagement.
Shishishimiwa inshamoofana naloo?
We know at some point, your staff might have had problems.
Efshtuwa leshakusunganleka batir, banguina babinamintlontla, nala aya?
Due to few miscommunications.
Ekwa la okokwakwina kslangana kasi kupa labula?
But also we've said, when they were saying no one will be here, we said we'll cut our trip short.
Logovakar ba ku kungebinamunla, iti itatsema tienzotai ina?
So that we be part of this important session.
Lesha kui ibashpimushantshamoluwa ankoka?
So we're saying, as Ba Palaburua municipality.
Yeritanimaspa lawaba ba Palaburua?
Welcome the parliament.
Yamkeela parlamente?
When you are here, you represent parliament.
Logomirla mi imela parlamente?
So welcome the Parliament of South Africa.
Yamkeela parlamentia Afrika zonga?
So that we're able with our community to engage.
Lesha kui kota tani iba aki kuba iborisana?
So we're saying, feel free, you are at home.
Ntsuche kani mileka aya?
The rest you know.
Leshuwa ninkwasmasitiba?
I believe you know where restrooms are. So that your people don't suffer, but when you go out through this way.
Logomewuma indela lei?
On your left, it's male restrooms.
Esmatzine shambukeela shabashi nunu?
On your right, it's female.
Esinene ni iba shisati?
But also, in my conclusion.
Logodikarin kimet?
I want to say in South Africa, this is described and prescribed as women's month.
Ne lava kupula leshak Afrika zonga, leshilela kshona kango itileba isati?
It's very important for us to respect and I also appreciate that the chair is a woman.
Sinankoka kushuni ipan, noktakilancho kwini leshakumsamowashitulu iba isati?
Yeah, they've contributed so much to the democracy we have today.
Ba woshishanda shnene kasi democracy leshingana shonana namuntla?
They fought at the battle line like ourselves as men.
Balui le le masweni la nyimpia irkona kufana na ina tani ibaba nunu?
But also you still go further and counter triple challenges.
Kambe ba tya ba masweni baslangana namintlontla yanguwa?
Maracaspeidi barri mosadutwaratipaka bohalii. Shonamus. Yeah, so want to take this opportunity chair and welcome you in Ba Palaburua, feel free, engage with our people. These are no longer our people, they are your people.
Ilawakuteka ankaro, ntsamowashitulu kumibzela shaku ntsuche kani, borisanana nava aki aba arba inasi ibanwina?
Thank you very much.
Ikomushne.
Eh, ikenzile tatane spikara?
Thank you Mister Speaker.
Sese mosia masiri, yaya etakep, ye ketshad, enwa mashwi.
Another idiom says, when the flock is led by the female, there is milk to drink ahead.
Yes. We, yeyela yahori yeta kiepele, kietshadi pele, ewela kalimopeng, asio na, seya South Africa?
That one, the one, the old one that used to say, the flock that is led by the female will always fell into the donga, it's not South African.
South Africans is that yaya etakep, kietshadi pele, enwa mashwi, afresh.
The South African one is that the flock that is led by the female will drink fresh milk.
Akirhalita ebetela matzoba, butad.
I thought you were going to give this a round of applause.
As the speaker has indicated.
Tani logo shpikara ba kombisile?
That were meeting in the middle of the August month where our women are being celebrated.
Lesha kui tlananeshkar kwa ngweti ya Agastla, aba isati ba tlankiruaka?
Today's meeting is part we dedicate to their sweat and struggle.
Tlankeletanana namuntla na yonai, nyiketa ekakuti kiruaka wona?
Because we are today at Democratics, South Africa because they have too contributed a lot in our struggle.
Afrika zonga le ingana shidemocrasana namuntla, ekubana ba wona ba washile shanda shnene, ekaku luelantsheseko?
And as the speaker has indicated, or ma wana utuaratipaka bahali, kibo onane inchibare patachile, le barwaba onakamuka ba ilunghuri, nevachi le ba ilulu wanala mtwayatukuluho. Eh, kibomaba ilunghur, neba ba fitla kafasea mesam, kafasea mepete, kibomaba iluru, neba ba isheja dijor, ba hona utsela di Mozambique.
As the speaker has already mentioned that a mother holds a knife on the sharp end. It's the mothers who were protecting the struggle fighters. It's the mothers who fed them and made sure that they were safe.
We want to take this opportunity to say to all women, happy August month to you.
Ilawakuteka katekulu, ekua kaba isati yunkwabo, happy August month ekangwina?
Back to the agenda, the purpose of this gathering.
Kotalela, ekashkongo melo shantlenkeletanoli?
We coming here to garner your views on the bill that was table in parliament.
Itilela kushlenkeletan mabonelia yanguina, ekana wmbisilo wanga andlarwa e parlamente?
The bill, it's called Housing Consumer Protection Bill.
Na wmbisu witanwa wansirelelo waba tirisi batindlu?
Before we go to any areas as portfolio committees.
Engase ekandawi, kumbe itani iti committee ta parlamente?
We send our education team.
Iremela shipanusha ina shati jonzo?
To go and interact with communities to prepare them for public hearings.
Kuya borisanana nava aki kuba lamsala, kuba namintshamulia kuingisela ma wonela yavona?
So that they can then understand what this bill is all about.
Lesha kuba kota kutwista, lesha kuna wmbisilo uvula vula hini?
So I want to check in this hall, how many of the people I hear have attended the workshop?
Ne lava kukamba la olweni, ibanga iban lavangala, bang'a engenala ti workshop le tadirkona?
Can we raise hands so that we can see?
Enga imisama woko leshaku e wona?
Emisang, I can't see. Okay.
Beri imisang kase, wakutuku wona lavangan, engenala ti workshop takululamisela ntsamolu?
Ba wa attendilen di tukishia jochakopa noye, le ma, leva shume di ba parlamentia, rhopela rolewona.
Those who attended the pre-visit, can you please see your hands?
Okay. It's a fair representation, but that doesn't mean that those. Okay, um, it's a fair representation, but that doesn't mean that those that have not attended, they are not going to allow to speak.
Insayo yakase yala vangan ngeneleli workshop kambe asuvulukula vavangarikona vangefu meliru kubulavula?
And we appreciate those that have attended because now you have benefit and you have prepared, uh, to this meeting.
You can shshnenela vangan ngenelela vanga attendati meeting ekubashesi ngwina mi lulamiseru kuanza kuvami evashpemusha ntsamolu?
And we are going to ask, as we call people to come and speak, uh, you should then indicate whether you support the bill or you reject the bill.
Etakumbela kulo kumita mitavolavula mikombisale esokuma usaketela na ombisi kume ami imina wona?
I know that when, um, communities hear that parliament is coming, um, they would want to, because of the excitement, they would want to raise even other things that are not in the bill.
Nastebal esok kulo vaki vato kupalamente ile kuteni, ekubavatsakeli kupa parlamente irkona bangalaba na kubulavula ite makatingwa ni leti tingareki kona kana ombisi?
Um, we are not going to stop you to do that, but we request that, um, we should stick to the public hearing, but if there are burning issues, we are welcome to listen to those burning issues.
Ay ingema alili kumbulavula ite makatingwa ni ambilesi yukumbela kaleesoku ilandelerisa timakatan tamo kambe lukunata makatingwa ni leti hisaka itati ingisela notona?
Seea twan, ye twananamus. Um, I'm going to try and summarize the bill because, um, if I start to present it, the bill might take the whole day here.
Nitaringata kuko misana ombisi ekubalo kunosungula kua andala ingatekasuku inkuarula?
I've indicated that we are here to solicit your view on the bill on Housing Consumer Protection Bill.
Nekombisilelesoku ilakutwa mavonele yanguina ekana ombisu wansirelelo wabaterisi batindlu?
Um, mula wana o. Um. Okay, um, kitlalika u, obulela gaspeidi, huririfu kujena koya, maraguna libatuwa, baba bulelan, eh, vasagun spedi li zonga, then we'll disadvantage them. So we are going to allow both spedi and zonga to translate.
Ki, kitola, kitola ekabulela gaspeidi, ebya kabakalawo, honelaba wambatiba spedi, ebya abatibes zonga, kitola kala hori, rebeli dituluki chapeidi, omuwa aybea gaspeidi, omuwa tlaybea gaszonga? Itatirisawa undulushi ibzimberi ibzaspedi nashitzonga, lesoku inkweni ekota kutwalisanga kubulawuwe?
The Housing Consumer Protection Bill seeks to repeal the Housing Consumer Protection Measures Act. That was, um, adopted by parliament in nineteen ninety-eight.
Mula okakanyawa wachirelejuwabareki yamingwako wa two thousand and one, unyaka opumila mula wa, wa, wa piling, wa mehua yachirelejuwabareki yamingwako wa nineteen ninety-eight, mula wa nineteen five, wa nineteen ninety-eight, omuwa no tla buvichwa mula.
Na ombisu wansirelo wabaterisi batindlo wa two thousand and one, ulavakutahirisa na ombisu wamen delewa wansirelelo wabaterisi batindlo wa nineteen ninety-eight, na wa number ya nineteen five, wa nineteen ninety-eight.
The Housing Consumer Protection Measures Act of nineteen ninety-eight, it started to operate on the fourth of June nineteen ninety-nine. As the department were and the council that is responsible for building environment tries to implement this legislation, they've identified lot of gaps and therefore, uh, come up with this bill to repeal this, the Housing Consumer Protection Measures Act.
Biyalu mula, uh, mula o, utomile osuma ka, ka la, ka la, ka di four June nineteen ninety-nine, omi o fetushijue, gararu ke, ke mula o petusho, wa mehua yachirelejuwabareki ba mingwako wa nineteen ninety-nine. Mula wa fetusha, wa, wa o fetusha mingwaku, wakira mingwaku, lichirelejuwabareki ba mingwako wa two thousand and seven.
Na u sungle kutira iti four takota wushika nineteen ninety-nine, nasona uchinchu wile kufike la kanaru inau wama endelelo yansirelelo wabaterisi watindlu nineteen ninety-nine, na wa number ya twenty-seven wa nineteen ninety-nine, na uchinja shatindlu two thousand and one, wa number ya four wa two thousand and one, na uchinja wamendelu yansirelelo wabaterisi two thousand and seven, kunga na wa number ya seventeen wa two thousand and seven, ekulandelela nakayona, nzaulyama thamelo yavanu na uvu yantara swaba akiva tinwarishaka, bakumile minthlantlo yukar, ishulave kunkulusha nau, le shisukumba gamatirelo yoyetiseka yantiroa uvu, indele yu biya, tani ile ilavakaku langutisisiwa?
Um, the Housing Consumer Protection Bill seeks to ensure adequate protection of housing consumers and effectively regulate, effective regulation of the home builders industry, inter alia strengthen in the regulatory mechanisms, strengthen in the protection of housing consumers, introducing effective enforcement mechanisms, and prescribing appropriate penalties or sanctions to deter non-compliance by the home builders.
Gofitlaga biyalu mula kakanjua, unyaka okhotishisha, chirelejuwye, eh, likanneho, yabareki ba mingwako, letaolo yea, yea, yea industri yea mingwako, magarangache diwe, le matlafacho yea mehua yataolo, matlafacho yachirelejuwabareki ba mingwako, o, otlakamehua, yachapelacho, le chupecho yea, dikotocha maleba, kova di, di sanction ni, kutiwe la, tryke ro yea, petaga cho, kaba akiba mingwako?
Kufike la shesi, na ombisu ulavakutisisa busireleri ibzo hetiseka ibzabaterisi batindlu, na ulauri ibzo hetiseka ibzapiinzu rabumaki ibzatindlu, i eka shottala kutisisa wamendelo yavulauri, kutisisa nserelelo wabaterisi batindlu, kutivisiwa ko hetiseka na ulanzeleri si ibzamendelo, na kuveka minzi olifaneleke, kusive la kunga lanzeleri uka milau, eva akiva tinlu?
In addition, the bill seeks to address the economic transformation of the industry through the introduction of the provisions relating to the warranty fund surplus which may be utilized towards developmental programs for the home building, uh, industry.
O talalecha, mula okakanyawa unyaka urarula petu, o kucha ikonomi, kaku zibishadi niyalanu cha wama garantia chalete, yatalalejo, yewa ekadilishago, le manane onatavulo, mo industri niyakwa, yakago yamingwako? Mula okakanyawa unyaka rape? Unyaka kothama tikulugo, yaku kuncha, bau elehu, kuba bao batana windasteri, yakagu yamingwako, kadiniyalanu, cha kontraka, cha kuchanti shisha ore, bachi yasavaka marakimu?
Kotatisa kuala o, na ombisu ulavakululamisa kuchinja kasha ekonomi, eka shabinzu, yukutivi sashulave koshamayala namali, le ingasala ekan kwama, le ingatiriswaka, eka minongonokya tlukiswa binzu, rasavumaki ibzatindlu?
The bill seeks to create an enabling environment for new entrance into the home building industry through the introduction of contractual provisions that ensures their sustainability in the market.
Mula okakanyawa unyaka lugulekanya, lugu thama synergy, le diribache diwe, cha mula cha maleba, biyalu kama mula wataolo edichalete, ja si chaba, wa nineteen ninety-nine, ole mula wakudisho yato ka yatipidisho yaa two thousand.
Na ombisu ulavaku endla mbangu lo endlakali esokushkoteka kubana vanu lavancha, lavangena ka eka bindzu rasoku agatindlu, yukutivi sashulave koshaminjwanano le itisisaka, lesoku vakota kuhanya eka makete?
Uh, the bill further seeks to align and create synergies with other relevant pieces of legislation such as Public Finance Management Act of nineteen ninety-nine and the Promotion of Administrative Justice Act of two thousand.
Mula rape unyaka, lugulekanya, lugu thama, le, 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 lekarlo chedi wecha taolo edichalete, ja si chaba, ole mula wa nineteen ninety-nine, ole mula wakudisho yato ka tipidisho yaa two thousand, wa number ya two thousand.
Na ombisu yama shweni ulavakufambi sana no endale esoku kubana antirisano, nashye ingeshuwa nshon, shanau, sofana nanau, wama famisela yatimali tamfumo wa nineteen ninety-nine, kunganau wa number ya one wa nineteen ninety-nine, nanau wa tlakuso wabulauri ibzabululami two thousand, kunganau wa number ya two wa two thousand.
So the chapter one of the, the summary of the bill that will entail, one, the, the definition of, 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 of the, of the, of the, um, application, the, sorry? The chapter one of the bill deals with the definitions, uh, and chapter two then expand on the protection of the, of the, of the communities themselves or consumers.
Kaolo yapi li, yamala okakanyawa, ibulela kadi talusho, petaga cho, yamala le petaga cho, yamala wataolo edichalete, ja si chaba, wale kuta?
Kawanyisakosungula kana ombisi kutira nanatintlamselo, materiseliya nau na materiseliya nau wama famisela yatimali tamfumo eka uvu?
Um, the scope of application of legislation is extended to include not only builders who undertake home build, building as a business, but also owners builders.
Mula okakanyawa lena garagachi diwe ka taluso yaku aga, kukatulusha chirelejuwabareki ba mingwako, kaku akarecha kulukisha, mtsafacho le tipetu sho, lugukecha wako kata sekataolo yale kuta?
Um, the, the previous legislation, it has given, was given the National Home Builders Regulatory Council as a, as a regulatory board, even this one still, uh, emphasize the con, that continuation.
Indele ra materiseliya nau, ra ndandamushiwa kwenela kukatsaba akila vateka kakua kaindo aleka ya, tani binzunse na kambe shkangwe, na kukatsaba akila vangavi nyu batindlu, va akila vangavi nyu batindlu, va katu wile kantamseleba akiva tinlu, nasona kula vake kaleesoku va tarisa, va tarisa nau uvu?
Um, chapter three of the bill seeks to provide for the registration of home builders and developers, establishment of the register for home builders, the requirements for registration, suspension of the registration, grading of home builders, and liability of un, unregistered home builders or developers.
Kaolo yavuraru yamala okakanyawa, ibulela ka, ka, tabaya lo, le kuta le ulidiro kuru, ulidiro tipidisho, cha kutsanela, lugu bengitseka, bao bataguba le kuchanti sha, urubengitseka ba olupa chiakolo, matwom onatipidisho yasemula, lugu biyadi lo pepe nene?
Shpemusha vinaru shanau ombisi, shila ngtisa eka kuchuvukisiwa ekutitlangansana uvu, nasona kubile nama endele yabutitlangani si ibzashimo shala entlam, nala vanganashi ave, balenzini nabalahanle, kutisisa lesoku endelele, riba eribaleni shkangwe na kungenelela, kala va, vanganashi ave, eka endele ra nau, logo ungasia eparlamente?
Chapter five of the bill seeks to provide for the establishment of the register of enrollment, the enrollment of a home prior to the commencement of its construction by home builders, consequences for failure to enroll a home, duties in respect of subsidy housing project, and the consequences of a failure by the member of the executive council or the member of mehral committee responsible for human settlement, a social housing institute, institutions, institution, or a subsidy housing delivery agent to comply with the provision of the act.
Kaolo yavutthano yama taba, yaa, kuchacha pele, gathokomelo, yaba reki, lebona baba, ba, 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 ba shumishi, ibile kula telwa, yoname lawo, eyi ichola kopele, yewa etlabulawo, lugu ratolwa, lugu lukishwa, wanaka garaga, dipletisha nuchere, le ochoona, elekarlo yaa, yonakpa la, dipletisha nchapa parlamente?
Shpemusha vuntthano shanau ombisu ufanile kutira, kume kutiraniwa nau wona, kuya endela, na endelele ribekueke, kasulave koshaxi engesa seventy-six ya bumbiwa, tani le shufunza ankulu namfumo warishaka, singawa namatimba lamafana ka, kume, singeriki namatimba lamafana ka, eka timakali ti na ombisu ulavaka kutululamisa, kutani, kutati tlanganisiwa nasufunza ankulu, inkare wakutirana nanau ombisi?
Um, the chapter five, I'm sorry, it was chapter four, the one that I've, I've read, chapter five of the bill seeks to provide for the funds of the council, the home warranty funds, additional funding through money appropriated by parliament, as the council's regulatory mandate is a public function, the establishment of nonprofit company, management of funds, the fees of the council, commencement and the duration of the warranty, the maximum and the minimum amount payable from the warranty funds, and the claims and limita, limitations.
Kaolo yavutthano yamala okakanyawa, inyaka unyela na, kachalete yale kuta, chalete yagaranthia mingwako, chalete yatalalejo, uhu, chalete yaku abiwa kiparamenteka kale kuta li shumela si chaba, tamo yakampani yaku sidiredi zeno, taolo yadi chalete, ditifelo chale kuta, tomu le saba kasa garantie, wunchi le wenyani yachalete, yaku lifiwa ochoa chalete yagaranthi, ditlaimi le melwani?
Nzaolo yupumelela na, na taka kilo takukanziswa kana ombisi kukuma shbumabumelo shabano eka gazeti amfumo, na tisexin tama uungu wonzulushi, na taka kilo tingwa ni leti tingavaka kona, taka kilo leti buruaka, tita hakiruaksuka eka mpe manyetuwa nzaolo, uvu ita emashweni yehakela latimaka tayona, nantiroa yona, imali le i, i kumekeka taka kilo tutzarisa, taka kilo tupusheta talembe, na taka kilo tanzariso, kwengetala kuala o, na ombisu ululamisela mali yu uvu yutatisa, leifaneleke kua amkiruaksuka eka timali leti aberuaka eparlamente?
And chapter six of the bill seeks to prohibit the procurement of services to build a home which forms part of the subsidy housing project from a builder who is not registered with the council, relies on a home that was not enrolled with the council in, in his standard submission, who previously failed to rectify or complete the rectification of structural defect as the, as directed by the council without reasonable grounds, or who failed to disclose any information prescribed by the Minister of Human Settlements.
Kaolo yavutselela yamala okakanyawa, inyaka kutiwe la kwecho yadi tirelo, cheu elehu karu yaproject yamingwako, yewa bengba yona, ba kwecha kuto shari chalete, mingwako yangu agiwa kimoagi, uha mingwako, yuha sa wadi shua?
Mavoneli avona engasiya ekabanguan.
Um, and there are those that would want, who not want to speak but they have written submission. You are encouraged to take your submission to the table.
Kuna lebawo ele ugori, kaba nyakuku volela feela di lojabo nalidi ngongo re goba di ngadile fasi. Bialo gilu ugoru unali se lo se osu ngadile mfasi se u nyakangsi ofita parliamenting. Wena dyaguru usi she mota fuleni yela yabangua lady se lo se osaga osu uta ova osu ngadile.
Kuna lava engale mkele sok sanga ndleka bangala ukubulavula. Kambe bata zele zele e hansi subuma bumelo shavona. Ikuwa la olo kubarna subuma bumelo shesosanga tzarua e hansi bangasui sa etafule nleria la sungata amkeru akona.
Can I check again if we have abundavestita or magoshi in this hall?
Eh, kina kagubutisha ekabar na le magoshi ova bonava laudi vana kababushi vana kabamuntu. Bayeta pele basi chava.
Lavaka msi sa lokuri eh na tuosi, kumbebabu kosi, lavarange la katiko eshkar ka eh na?
Oh bakona, eh, nukumbela kurimengwe na if you want to speak, you must be the first one to to speak.
Re boni guru bawa nabu kushimo, bialo rokopela guru gilu guri, banya kagubulela re talifas ba kasa guri, libe ba matomo ba gubulela.
Eh, let's all tell her, um, you'll follow the disability communities.
Leta tamorago ga, eh, 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 bale bari nabu basu ba itikana ela.
Me tata inzaku kala baba anyanka nabutsoniwa?
Um, now I'm going to open floor for those that wants to comment on the bill or they want to raise any other issue, um, that they want parliament to hear on.
Eh, kitlo na makichie saba kase ki vulele, tabaya ba tubaylo guru, banya kaboru babulele di lo, banya katabache lo diye parliamenting. Ba 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 tababulele kitlo jia saba kasi, rasefa ba tuba basundu rbatle, babulele ba volele di tabachunati sondu rtoraldishiu parliamenting.
Ndata kankaro nini keta lavaba ngana subuma bumelo mavonelo, lawaba lavaka leshaku ya rumeroa eh paralamende.
Um, let me check with the disability, do anyone wants to speak, you can, the mic must go to them.
Kera to, kera to obutisha ba, ba ba pila okavohole, kipela guru retome kabona, rokopela maiki uye obona.
Um, in the meantime, before we start, let me then recognize people who want to speak so that they can go and sit on those chairs.
Loko ya kumbisa ku lavaba anyanka nabutsoniwa ba ta kumbete la kubavona busungla kubavula. Na lava balaba kubavula ikuwela kubale muka leshaku ba ta tsaama ekashtulu leshla shkari.
Can I see in the, in the, those that want to speak, they should raise hands so that we can recognize them?
Kipela baba reta obulela, kipela le mishe ngdiya tachale na, guru kipeno walelebo, walelemu akile fesaba ka.
Lavaba kubavula imsan mavokoli shaku etaminikan kari?
Raise your hand so that I can see you. Number one is Ma here. Number two is the mother there, eh, number three Otata with the, eh, orange suit. And then can I see other hands?
Nengabona mavokoya ngwani?
Otata eh, on the second row. Eh, I need ten people, ten people.
Ne lava bano ba ten ba kume kusungula?
Kipela ba tuba le sumi ba matomo.
How many are they? Six. Let's get another four.
Ay, kumen four bangwani?
Rohopela baba ne ba talelechu.
But you with the spectacles. We are number six, number seven, yeah, but you with the, yes, let's get another one. We need ten.
Elava kumera bano?
Rohopela ba tu, ba le sumi.
Shot two, we need two.
Elava bambir bangwani?
Eh, roshotaba baba edi.
Oh, Makewo. The other hand, the last hand.
Vokora etelela?
Oma felelo?
Oh, the chairs are smaller there. But you there, or Tata, yes, thank you very much. Um, we'll start with the, the, um, our disability community and then followed by davestita and then, um, the rest of us will follow.
Edasungula elava ba anyanka nabutsoniwa ibi balandela indavestita ibi sokulanzela lavangua.
Omee bialo retoto makaba opila kabo olofadi, omee wetepo ocholeba wetapile basijo, omee retoalepe.
A good morning to the honourable members from parliament and good morning to the community. I think it's a very nice experience for you to hear from me as a deaf person.
Eh, Richile Ekasirosa, paralamende na ikuwa bavula bangakona oho eh olweni. Eh, inkatekueka mi inahkuba nibana inkatekua kubavula tani imunluu angatweki?
Um, I am using South African sign language.
Ndaba nikari nibala blake kuterisa mavoko?
Uh, it's the first time I am attending a public hearing.
Erosungula ningene la ntsamo?
But I know what has been happening to the public hearings that have been taking place throughout the country.
Kambe nashtibale shasu umelela ekamin tsamuli ayirku umelele na tikweni?
I'm aware today we are focusing on, uh, the, the bill.
Nashtibale shaku namuntla eh la wutiseka na ombisi?
But I have an issue, uh, that I have been thinking about for some time now.
Kambe ninamakale ikunga kari nyana kari ne ana kanya yo na?
Uh, I think you have allowed me to say whatever pending issue that I have.
Loko na lava kara kubala blake maka yo isale ningana yo na?
As a deaf person, I have done some research.
Tani imunluu angatweki ni ndilevula vssisi?
I have discovered that your hearings have been happening throughout the country.
Ni lymkele shaku mintsamuli ileku umelele na tikweni inkuaro?
You will always have sign language interpreters and other spoken language interpreters, which is very much appreciated.
Kuba okuri na ban lavaba kuba kari ba interpreter kumbekundulusha is sign language, na lava undulushaka itinzimithi ngwan leshosanga namkoka?
But indeed to take note of sign language, it has its own users like myself.
Kambe fanimta kela ntlukweni sign language, inabatiriswa yo nafana namina?
So when there is a public hearing, there must be deaf people attending those hearings.
Se lokuri na mintsamuli kufana kuba na ban lavaba ngene la ekamin tsamuli?
That will show full inclusion of deaf people.
Lesushanga takombisa kukatsiwa ikuwetiseka kaban lavaba angatweki?
As the users of this last sign language.
Tani ukufana lokara kutiriswa sign language?
Which means we acknowledge that the interpreters are in house.
Lesu, siu kumbisa kela shaku, taka ntlukweni lesu ba undulusha bariri mi ba varkona?
We know we have other platforms where we can access public hearings like your social media.
Yafstibale shaku inasi engesu nganso fana social media la inga kuma ekamin tsamuli ekasona?
But it's very limited, so if you need deaf people's contribution, you need to change the setup.
Kambe shuva shu pimi uili nguvu, kutan lokumi lava kutwa mavonelo yavano slava michincha ma endelo?
Maybe you don't, you do not know how to contact deaf people, I can help you with that, there are a lot of organizations for deaf people.
Kumbi amishtibule shaku mengatishanganza endela eh na mintsangano yavano lavanga tweki itele mintsangano nengame pona?
So just to wrap up.
Loko nikari nikata kanya?
I have went through the bill.
Ni la wutisi lena ombisi?
I would, I'd like to add something that will empower the economy, especially for the disabled people.
Ne lava kukata shunguan leshishinga ta anjisa ekonomi nguvu, nguvu lavaha anyanka nabutsoniwa?
So the bill doesn't speak to the disability sector at all.
Le, ikuwa na ombiso nga la wutisi ekala baha anyanka nabutsoniwa?
Davestita.
Oh, inani Soli Baloi, eh, niwa buosi plaka Kakala, ekiyani. Lesi ngavula kashona ekuri, eh, ekatin daole ti ingakatoona. Unava nu lavanga nabusueti, lavaba kumeka kaba kari baaka, ti ndumara bangafikileli, ti makata ti building plans.
I am Soli Baloi of the Traditional Authority at Kakala. There are people that are building houses there but not being able to afford the plans.
Anla ba kutcheka kakuri, eh, ini lesi mingabu na kutishona kutfikela la, ekakuri bakota kutwisisa, esha ti building plans. Shikanwe na esha machile ndukukukvarni pusueti na.
I wanted to check what is it that you can assist them with to afford the business plan even in terms of funds?
Eh, shunguana nakambe, imakaya kuri kunava nu lavava ngana ti close corporations akati villages. Le titi wa kati kari ti lavaka kutira marame kuma kuri abana mali.
There are those with close corporations in villages that wants to work but you find they do not have funds?
Anla ba kutcheka, nitwe kuri kunan kwa, mashana mengasui kota kutekela bava lavava tsaamaka, esitandini swainna. Enso kweni kuba bakota kupuneka nabona bakota kuti emaila, ekati close corporations tabona.
I wanted to check, I heard there is a fund that can you be able to assist people that are found in our community to be able to access these funds, especially with those having close corporations?
Loko kuruku mitaskota kubapona, anla ba kutiwa nakambe kuri, xana minama endele yokari, lawa yangakota kuku, landile risa, matirisele yavona yatimadile.
And if you will be able to help them, I also wanted to check whether you have a means that is able to follow up on how they use the funds?
Tani iloko mingaku makuruko, bangarana lavava landile risa akasenga endeka ba, atlavawa bangaku tikutlakuka, bakota kutati san kwa ma wa ekonomi.
Because if they aren't people that are following up on how they are using the funds, they may fall very quickly and not be able to develop their business.
I think stavasi ele really is unlucky.
That will be all that I wanted to find out. Inkoma shnene?
Um, I given the disability and abundavestita they lot of time because they are representing sectors. So, ro nakafeela regiteje, bialo huri, eh, rubulele, three minutes, three minutes, three minutes. So that everybody can get an opportunity to speak.
Ki beki file, eh, bao opila kabo olofadi, na koe ilekane ngelbona bayeta pele basijo. Eh, bialo ocholepele, re nakamoka, gorohono kuchasaba kasa obulela kamoka. Kitoho pele guri, re, re, kuchemi tutu, yemi raro, yemi raro, mutuaro, rekapi la, kame tutu yemi raro, anchema ikutuaga.
Ni nyikile lavaha anyanka nabutsoniwa na babu kusinka riku varanga babu blabu shnene? Kambe inavangua lavaya nga talanzela, ntakombe leshaku itiriswa three minutes, three minutes, isongasongai ikuwa atlisa ti makata hinna?
As you speak, you indicate your name and then you tell us whether you support the bill or you reject the bill and then you then make your input.
O, no tafa waravucha linalagao, waravucha guru wenau tehamala okakanwa, ova ochalanung lemanala okakanwa. Omee waswela, waswela swela kama bakaga.
Loko mi balavula, midai bze la, ma biti angwina, mititivisa, ebimi bze la ku masaketela, kumbeku ale lana, kumbeku kane tana navambiwa. Kutani semi nyika mavoneli angwina inzaku?
Eh, inkoma mtsamashstulu?
Thank you, Chairperson.
Vitarami ime tembino kanguenyama, akati kokwalu ekani?
I'm Tembino Ngwanyama, who is a community member of Lulekani?
Bili ngayla namuntla ni twiseka le eh na isaketela.
The bill that we read today, I understand it properly and I support it.
Ishule na lava kubala blake ku yo emotional.
The issue that I want to talk about is making me emotional.
Nakensasunene loko paralamende itekaa ina ere ba akatiko?
I am grateful that the parliament has come to us as the community.
Ikale nila kupuniwa ngastiku loko sirisso hipune kanja, ni kui ni inkaro anja.
It's long that I've been looking for assistance but not knowing that in this situation, where do I get assistance and how?
Nakambe iban banja, ni twenty sixteen kume inlamia RDP.
Eh, as well as what kind of people can assist us, in twenty sixteen, there was my house of RDP.
Inlele ibe yuuma, maraloko, eh, ti inspector ti ta, ti fikika tu kutingeaki because kaka enakuna teru.
When my house was granted, the inspectors came and said they could not build that house.
Sonzeluem kancela rakunfanele na lava standin, kathulan tutsumania tribal authority niya kumbela stand.
They could not build the house because there was a three room there. Then she engaged the counselor and said that she should find a new stand and rushed around and quickly found a stand.
So eh, tribal authority, yuwe in, in, jikajikama, after eight months, ba dwinewani ka, in dunai amganga, kuba yaba allocate us standis nar.
The tribal authority gave me a run around in the beginning, but after some time, they said the counselor or the induna actually should allocate us stands.
Ta standi sheshe ibe jilo ku ifanele umesa eight hundred and fifty, inkaro lo standi ashiri eight hundred and fifty.
We were told that the stand will cost us eight hundred and fifty?
So maraku ya inkari, mkontraktoraba bebata, balakuya bonandaole, bafanele kuba akakayo, ni bayeleketaba yabonanda.
The contractor then came to want to see the place where the building should be erected. I then accompanied the contractor.
In no time, babisaba chichati building materials, basungula kuyendla ti foundation.
They then delivered building materials and started making foundations.
Ni endla kutifolo aplo, kunkelela site niinkuma ku abar kona na ti building materials tabo.
Then I made follow-ups, when I went back to the site, I found they were no longer there with their building materials.
Nzeluwini ba akatiko lavangale kusuku, bangenenzene kashkodjan, zenkablo.
I was told by residents around that they've gone under a, a river, under a bridge.
So ilati inlotan, inatinka erectu akotirtinar.
So that's where our houses have been, the three of them?
Se kuka yanga tivi chaneli ma endelo, ku utajela mani, kui ni, nibeni yendavu imai imanla kutlangansana mkansela ra. Anga kumeki phone, anga kumeki mkansela ra elo.
Because I didn't know what to do and who to speak to, I tried to engage the counselor but the counselor is forever unavailable, is not responding to calls on his phone.
Enenka rolo mkontraktor, le akensewa rufa wietini.
And in that time, the contractor is building, is now roofing, is finishing the house.
Loko nblala namkontraktor, akanixti mkansela ra, angwe ya angandela kunisuka le, anaka kontanta akalanzene kashkodjan.
When I spoke, spoke to the contractor, the contractor said, no, I don't know, speak to your counselor. It was your counselor that said I should move there and come and ac, and build here in the, where there's a river?
Se endela yele yo, eh, iben, ben samale, ben nganjenzen kayindo, enenati epileta, eh, nikiwanga. Yetelele senfonela mkontraktor, anukuku akamietini marati epileta, amse ni ka. Ebii mkontraktor akufambina, buta uli pulukwani ke, se ni yetelele, nungzela kunmen, lamgenanzen kayindo ntsama, ekulanga tsaamako shimu xame ashkash.
At the end, there was nothing I could do, so I had to go and stay in that place. I engaged the contractor to say, you are finished, but were not given letters. And the contractor said they have moved to Pulukwani. And I ended up saying that because of my current situation is not suitable, I need to move into the house.
Se mangenole amenzen kayindo mkontraktor, u, rumemu, ku aksavati loko ti nyikuwa, ma kelo aniku, nenasusa ti loko leti ngalan, kota kungenanzen kayindo.
The way I had to go in and use the house, the contractor brought in new locks, gave to a neighbor for me to go and change already those that were there so I can move into the house.
Se epileta, ani kumanga, shimu xamele shinga, shashreesh, inkari no sheshe, annandawa yakutama, ekuinlotan tsaamaka yon. Ilenzene kashkodjan, kufamba iblo, se blo lerita na ti soriji, loko kunampula, inlo yame ngena mati.
I did not get a letter. The house where I stay now is in the middle of a river, where there's also sewage there. And when it rains, there is water that gets in there, that gets up to the height of my knee.
Loko kunampula, ibe, nzenkashori ji toilet le ngale, anja pit toilet, umesa nama chaka, anja, ti ilo, iba, akatiko azaba boyaka, kuba ti borala, anja, ba ti endla timbobo, kuba, itakota kutiba. Ni blablaso, antilumalu, annambedo, annashtofu, anna arnanchum, se no amun, ene, kuala jaraten, anake oko nfoela ti uku, anna arna businessi, source of income yame, iteki uwi ni endela yaku, ni vanenzen kashkodjan, anna arku fuweni, nenfale ituku takutala, so, anla kutiwaku, endela le, kashimule shingale kashon, pune kanja.
As I speak now, I stay in this place whenever it rains, it gets flooded with a lot of water. The sewage spillage from the bathrooms, the toilets outside comes out and is flushed into the yard. The community there have borrowed the house and created holes for it to flood out when it is raining. I had a small business of chicken farming that has also been affected by this problem. There is no way of any income that I have at the moment. Hence, I wanted to ask, how can I be assisted in this situation?
Thank you very much, Makoa, and register that the issues, give them all the details there.
Ikensile shnene mengatzaresala ya mibanyika, bu shoko shoko bzanwina inkuabzo?
Um, translator, can you sit down and write so that my three minutes, eh, I can then be able to measure it properly? Then you write as they speak, then you don't go to summarize what they've said.
Tawela, linala kakinakoni murubana, kijwagi gravelo, dwight eighteen.
Edi bulajin, or skara interfere, abole, rohono se, o, o, seivanaku.
Tawela, kinnakoni murubana, kijwagi gravelo, dwight eighteen. Andawa palabu ramne sbarits. Bili alina kiamaliyon, kiukutisha chumadu, maraginelo problem. Wa agledindo twenty nineteen gravelo, ya di RDP. Indoja gravelo, zedagale, richeji chiles godimi, deachela, chiles mo, g, g, chiles godimi, deachela, lisili, ja ba, deachela li, de chiles muluwojuni, laka toilet. Ekuwala gisto, adi nali five years, de chiles zedela diawa, ogunale ngwana, ayaka toilet, aga gubala. Ma kancela ra, na kiamaluposhu, posho gi, wana ba chwawa, nyakilo, ba kontra, gaworba, debaga, rufoni, debada, ba lukisha ongledu, ndo, detri. Ki beki lo watch committee, ba lukishe ongdu, detri, kizene gar, marebe, isesipenla watch committee, garendodo diyariu. Indojaran, ali, ali, asu didi al five years, maraloko, gidindole, gas, konel, gas, ribon. Jenuwa disana, limesika, gua, mbra, ma ba diya, mo, inelu moya, moya wasana, ma fasta, razancha, moya, kialibo.
Thank you very much, my name is Konimoropani. I am from what, eighteen, Ba Palabuwa. I understand the bill very well. Eh, in my area, nineteen houses were built and they were tiled and toilets were put and then they have ceilings. Eh, those house, it's not even five years since they have been erected or built. Eh, but then now, eh, the, the, the tiles, the roofs are falling apart. Eh, but I do not blame the counselors, I blame the, the, the construction companies. And also, another thing is that those houses are flooding when it rains, thank you very much.
So, nkenza paralament, loku itile itala, ngakona palabura. Ishantse kesunene ma akeli atkontraga namamkansela ra wangala. So, ku komisale spalamende ingatelaso, oku mitiro, le yaku aga, wa akela tikwe, wey, paunam paralament. Ifikela akawi ni, bamturi alia, wa agi, nanza alene, kwasukunga maspala nga talsanganana wana. Ngariwa kancela, ngukuma, surikati ngoku, egusotala aso, nakata ni, rumba chwaba karuware, lagura, balabanga tako. Niko, msakwalan, sotala, etaswana, kari, ya inko.
My name is Charles Nlovu, I'm a community member of here in Lulekani. I have been involved in the work of building with contractors and the construction work generally. I am appreciative of the fact that the parliament has come to listen to our issues. So it is no longer just us and counselors and we are able to all look at these issues. Eh, that's what I wanted to say and we'll see the rest later.
Tawela, tumelo malaji, what committee member, I want five, under Alimunonel. Eh, Billy Rice supporter, thank you, Bill. Eh, no, nyakatlari, tigo, ngoche. Eh, unali, depaschede, kana mahale, oh, re kastene, bawa kane chaguri, maybe if nyaku agadu, mbaga, no, mu awa, wadu, wa, wa, meet. Kana mahale, kalo kshe, hausile, danke, bara awa agadu. And eh, nyaku, virtue source of income, that place, so, where nyakatlari, tona moguri. Eh, Billy, ay dumelela, ntewe, or, maybe, you know, ba kumkhuelungu, ba, dudiva, plekela, bana, anyaki duhu, wana, then maspala, ba, supporter. Just wanted clarity, thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, my name is Tumelo Malazi. I support, uh, uh, the, the bill. Uh, what I want is some clarity with regard to the bill. Uh, eh, in parts, in some parts of Namakhale, eh, we are, we are not allowed to build. They say it's a, it's a wetland, we cannot erect our structures there. But then we need a source of income. We want to build our businesses there so that we can, uh, we can survive. I would like to, 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 to check what the bill says about this, thank you.
Uh, good morning, everybody. Uh, my name is Nkateko, I go by the, the surname of Mola. I'm a ward community of Watrow, based in town. And I'm also the deputy secretary of the, uh, water and sanitation forum. So I'm here to, to query about, yes, as you stand here today, South Africa is one. It says, uh, our, our law, it says everyone has a right to safety and security. Everyone has a right to a father or a parent or a mother. So I'm here today to say, yes, we've been, um, and I accept the law, which is South Africa. South Africa is, is a government where we have certain laws, we have the right to go to school, we have the right to water and, and sanitation, we have the right to proper housing and safety and security. So I accept the bill. So my worry is that, um, we have facilities here that were built, that were supposed to be used for...
Land system. And I call it what currently. It could dilapidate and I like to take a look at what I love by. By the way, I'm just saying. So I will come back like. You can allow what I could be the municipality rates that I can't see a year after year. So look, I could ask for that, I could make a. What I could buy me and this I mean you come I call it what. Eka one, so I could buy what I could buy but it carries some I call it. Eka to make that tourism. So that it that what I have for them, I can unemployment. Now, when I can adequate training, I could I could tell you a role. Eka development, I could go to unemployment in young people. Thank you very much.
Good day. My name is Gideon Mabunda from Word fourteen. I support the bill. I believe it will improve the lives of the community. I've noticed that there are many old buildings or structures that are dilapidated. That were built during the homeland systems. And I see that the municipal raids keep increasing. I was just wondering why those buildings are not perhaps given to the youth. To use for different business purposes. It could be for tourism or other things that they could be used for. That could benefit them and they would be able to improve and contribute to the community's economy. Thank you.
Another ten people who want to speak.
I come back like ten bang one bang no la ba la ba kubula bula.
Matowa ma we ah ba towa mba le suni balor ba towa bula.
Two. Three, Papa with the, let's start with the, no, no, let's start with the data with the, with the baby here. Um. And then you'll be number two, Papa. Number two, number three. Number four. Number five, Papa with the cap. Number five. Number six, ma. Number seven, Mama, come, uh, come mask. Number eight, booty. With red, what it red say? Eh, I think I got one more, I saw no. Two women from this side.
Baba satu bambe, I got hello Larry.
Mama on top of, on top there. Mama with the mustard top. I want another woman. Mama with the red, eh. Scarobeyama, scarobeyawata war disha malat.
Watch your step. Please don't break a leg.
How many are there? Thirteen. One of them, I was saying, Moishekeba Vich. We're late, eh.
I asked for ten people.
We don't want people to stand.
We've got extra people on the queue. I asked for ten.
Kukopela, what I know, Baba, baby, by a male, mo, who's in a, but sad you're balance eh.
Nekomela, Baba, no, no, bambe, eh, bas.
I would you what it threats, you'll be number one in the next round. Followed by the one with the cap, you'll be number two. And then let's give it to two women there.
Nekomela, Baba, satu bambe, eh, bangana, Baba, no, no, bang one, ba oma.
So what do we do with the traditional leaders? That some of them, when they make decisions, do not communicate with communities. They would go and give land to Indians or other foreign nationals, but not communicating with communities. And there are problems when we engage with RDPs, the people that make applications and want to make applications to stay in those places or reside there. But at the end, they do not, they transform them to business places. And some are abandoned, some become drug dens that are used by people that are using drugs or those that are using Nyaope. But they were registered by people to stay there who end up not staying there. Those are my issues. Thank you. Thank you Chair, my name is Temba Baloi from Zanin under Ousingwami Tua Traditional Authority. I support the bill. I believe builders will get something from it, will benefit, will get jobs. Although I want to ask whether builders will be working under a contractor or they will be able to independently tender themselves. Also as Parliament, I want to say when you are making budgets, for example, you say you're making a budget or budgeting for Zanin. Do you look at all the housing needs in the area and cover everyone? Because there is a place in Bambanani since 2000, since there were the floods, the very well-known floods of 2000. There has not been a house that has been built in that area. You find instances where five, six, seven people in one family share one house or one room. Thank you.
In Komu, Nomsamashigoo, Wat Thetin. And I'm going to tell you about what I've seen. It's a beautiful day today. And I'm going to tell you about this. 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 And I'm going to tell you about this. I'm going to tell you about this. And I'm going to tell you about this. 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 So I'm going to tell you about this. 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 So I'm going to tell you about this.
I am Nomsamashigoo from Wat Thetin. I support the bill. There are instances where people do not have places to stay, women. It may be women that are coming from other places and they come here and do not have a place to stay. And that is a bad situation. I want support from the government. I've been trained by the government in different instances. I want to start a cooperative for a bakery. And I would want support from government in that area. There are a number of certificates that I have and I would like to utilize them. And therefore, I'd like to have support, to have structures or infrastructure that I can do these businesses and utilize these certificates in. Thank you.
I'm going to tell you about this. I'm going to tell you about this. I'm going to tell you about this. No one is concerned if the parliament is here and then municipality is here. When you go outside, it's water, it's relay. It's not so. And you say you are rendering and fixing. If all the leaders are here, but you are attending to the toilet where it's so dirty, smelling urine, how can you fail to render the service to the leaders here, we're all leaders? And then you can, the municipality can able to render the service on the ground. So there's no accountability. So the Parliament, you must take accountability. There will be no accountability if you don't monitor and evaluate the work. That's why we're having the problems with poor workmanship on the ground by RDP and so on. And my concern is this. There are disabled people on our wards, that's practically, where they have applied for RDPs. And the RDP supplier at the corner, this way, I'm going to tell you about this. So number two. There is no communication through our municipality. So that one needs to be attended to and that one need to be fixed. Because there is no service delivery, because there is no relationship between the two, the municipality which represent the Parliament as the government and the traditional authority. We find difficult to navigate and work with those people. The other thing, that it's a burning issue. Things are put in black and white, things are done, we're spoken like here is the Parliament. But one would find out. So in this kind of platform, we need practicality on the ground. Thank you.
My name is Oswald from Zanin. I want to thank Parliament for coming and engaged and be with us on the ground. However, I'm worried that the leaders are here from Parliament, from the municipality. But the restrooms, the toilets are smelly and watery and it is an unhygienic situation. I'm just wondering, how does that happen? While we have all the leaders here, how can you as leaders fail to render such services? And how will you be able to render services if you fail with this kind of a situation? It also indicates that there is no accountability on leaders on these issues. And this will translate, or at least it gives evidence to what you see on the ground, on the poor workmanship on the RDP houses. You see instances where disabled people will be able to apply for an RDP house. But those that are able to move around and stand up for their own issues and represent themselves better will end up being the ones that get these RDPs. They will then be given to others and those that made the applications in the beginning, being the disabled people, will not get them. There isn't any communication or proper communication between traditional leaders and municipalities. And this is another area that should improve and would improve things on the ground. Also, the fact that we're all gathered here, we are all able to speak and present concrete issues. But these issues are not done at the end, we do not see them on the ground. And that is another area I would like to raise. Thank you.
From Wat Six. Billy, Yamalion. Now, I'm going to tell you about this. Document, from Tuesday, I think. I've read this document. I can see, you even have the stakeholders. You've included the stakeholders. My concern, the engineers, they are here as stakeholders. But I think the engineers, they are not doing their work. Because RDP, an engineer, after completing, I think the engineers are failing the community. Because we lot check, we not qualified. No question, good engineer, because engineer, problem, much report, problem.
Thank you very much. My name is Mushibudi Muhale from Wat Six. I support the bill. What I want to understand is that we received this document since Tuesday. I went through the document and I could see that it includes the stakeholders. And then engineers are some of the stakeholders here. And I believe that engineers do not do their job. Because before construction phase, they go there and check the place and everything. And then after, they are the ones responsible for passing the house. And then after, after construction, they come back to inspect the house. And then they pass these poorly constructed houses. That's my challenge. Thank you.
From Wat One, Ed Wood Spray. I'm going to tell you about this. From Wat One, Ed Wood Spray. I'm going to tell you about this. 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 Anything can happen at any time. I'm going to tell you about this. I'm going to tell you about this. Anything, anything, I'm going to tell you about this. 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 What if anything happened? You did it, hundreds of times. You don't rectify, maybe the plan, maybe compromise. I'm going to tell you about this. 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 At least, you don't, you don't, you don't. I'm going to tell you about this. 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 At least, I'm going to tell you about this. Then, thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Mamsi Mashile. I am a member of the Wat Committee. I feel that I am not, I have not fulfilled my duty as the leader of the people. The people of Spray do not benefit in anything. We see only white people benefiting, poor people do not benefit. We see them residing under bridges. And just imagine a situation where a bus can fall on top of these people. It's over two hundred people who reside under these bridges. And the reason these people are residing under bridges is because we see the rising fuel prices. So people are not able to commute to work. So they decide to, they resort to staying under these bridges. I, as the Wat Councilor, please help me during my term. Please help me resolve this challenge. Thank you very much.
Ed Wood Spray, not Spray. Wood Spray, yes.
Let me show it. Blablabla, erinzelani, Semenya, the Greater Giani Municipality, Wat Eleven. So now, I'm going to tell you about this. I'm going to tell you about this. The councilor is here, the RDPs. Some of the people build the RDPs. They do a main pipe and then they complain. Some of them build the water. She's a parliament, Mary Jean, I'm going to tell you about this. She builds, she has a very, so much itopia, sorry to say this. This is in, I'm going to tell you about this. I'm going to tell you about this. I'm going to tell you about this.
My name is Renzelanis Semenya from Giani, Greater Giani Municipality. The issues that I've picked up is sometimes people give houses to, or RDP houses to their relatives. Sometimes these RDP houses are built on main pipes. And the result be people complaining about water interruption because of that or other problems that are caused by these houses being built on these pipes. Sometimes they are built behind people's houses. So I wanted to find out, what do you see as Parliament? What kind of an intervention you can have on such circumstances? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Those three people that I've said, they must, they'll be the first ones. Let's take another batch, those that still want to speak.
Blablabla, I'm going to tell you about this.
So with the white shirt followed by the one on top there with the black shirt. And then Buti, and then Mama here. Don't go to my chairs without me pointing you.
I'm going to tell you about this.
Buti with the cap. Cecilia and Buti with the mustard jacket. It's ten. Three minutes.
You can meet three minutes.
Hey, I'm going to tell you about this. 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 I'm going to tell you about this.
At R T L Zanin, there is a lot of noise and movement. Please.
I'm going to tell you about this. 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 Wat Thirty-One, my councilor, K Fas. I'm going to tell you about this. 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 The land is locked. The parliament is true, so. I'm going to tell you about this. 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 The parliament, it's the governor, they are children, they are. I'm going to tell you about this. They are priorities. I'm going to tell you about this. 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 I'm going to tell you about this.
Thank you very much. My name is Ruth Makomele. I had to direct myself to come here because I'm suffering from tenders. We never thought that we would one day see this opportunity where these issues like housing are going to be raised here in our home state. I have two burning points. Number one, it's concerning my house. The powers that be tell us that the law, that the land is locked. But then we see the situation where COVID-19 left us with many infants, many children without parents. You find a situation where a lot of people find themselves squashed in a small house. There's no privacy. And then this issue of lack of housing is is an injustice against the dignity of black people. Please get us a piece of land where you can build us houses. Please prioritize the disabled people, women and the youth. Coronavirus has caused a situation where we've got many infants. Please assist to upskill these children so that they can help their families. Because they have become child, they have become the heads of families at very young ages. Thank you very much.
I'm going to tell you about this. 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 I'm going to tell you about this.
I'm going to tell you, just to say with your support.
I'm going to tell you about this. And then, I'm going to tell you about this. I'm going to tell you about this. I'm going to tell you about this. It's that's why I'm going to tell you about this. And then, I'm going to tell you about this. I'm going to tell you about this. I'm going to tell you about this. The I U A got two days now. We be fed it. And then, say, oh, say, ah, oh, re. The laborer arena. Oh, yeah, challenge, they value, they play it, eh, eh. Carva island, do it fast.
Ba 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 zamaya, ene, ngoro yaga ibe basa moba chiba feja, ibe basa connecta le 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 soriji la guruyu kono ababa no ishiadi pipe gana moga namgar. Musa diola kontrage la maramo founya la giri. Aba le 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 wale ngutakulukisha pipe ela ya 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 soriji gara alia connecta. Kifedi jadi koyi digikamuka jetaro. Kiro balaka mgaran ngoro ene ngore. Ayakone kitua soriji rasa ya gualifuke maran ngoro yaga baydiye baydiye ti soriji kamunke. Kila gaga gabujam kansasala ra wakan, nama kansasala ra ma ngwa kanova sa shume mara. Nama kansasala ra gawa ilan tusha gar. Ilan mpe di nomoro jago ja 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 founu kampe di nomoro jaga ja founu. O founa jemu no mo ngwa gogo mu song. Awa straydiam founya larikita ga egagogo kanakueni. Aga gamgaran eja tazana gaga egaga. Garu ampana kamu kono. Agi beraki kinelewa na kamgaragaga gamutsono. Ene ki beraga siwulu pikula seba nandrade fele ya gushepa lewa na kamgaragamu. Kamu jaga ri. Ibe ki bilaki naga na gurufu dien ngoki abana bana waka basige. Basige jaga uja. Ki connecte line ene ya ya ki draga pipe ki soni connecte kanuji. Munno la gogo mu songa mku jari wowu. Jawa RDP ya ribareki shane na jo. Ilan aza munno we a founya la musa diola bekonama kamu founya la asati. At at amfounya la ruangwa wangwa musa dioma dimu. Ga nana kweni ki tom founya la mutyo we. Utomana utotaka musa ni yokosa. Udlile musa diola kontraga. Ena musa dioma etaka gwa ga 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 iba mku jali jaga uri.
Baba Arele. Re butisha, re butsho hori agona le fe lo. En le fe lo hori libelele chilogo, da re butsho hori le fe lo le kila di park. En wa so na di parki chewa di arivi. So be re re wey basajile fe lo le la ba rin kila di park, va la ba tu di RDP mo butsho da kosba di di vala. Yala bo.
My name is Tapa Maloumani. I am from Bapalabuwa Ward 5. We've got the problem of flooding especially when it rains. This is as a result of the fact that the slab on which the houses are built, it's a little thinner one that actually allows flooding. And even the cracks on the walls also promote the flooding because the water come in and out as they wish. And besides that, when we try to follow up with the authorities, we are told that they lack space, they don't have space where RDPs can be built. But we can, one can just see outside, as you look outside, you can just see, there is a, there is a, there is a, there is a, an open space somewhere. When you try to inquire about that, they tell you, no, that space is actually for, for the parks. And those parks are not created. So right now, we are very much frustrated because of the fact that the, 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 the RDPs are small. And at the same time, when we want to try and get extension of the bigger RDPs at a bigger space, we are told of the parks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Marigaspe, di varlele na mejim, di varlele chajile na mejim, varungmukogod. Litsizimkogod, yeah. Wa homu.
In sepe di, we normally say, we normally say it's about, it's about time because it's midday now.
We're going to take the last hands. I, I, I'm, I'm happy with your, with, with, with your protest. But I didn't want you, somebody to leave this meeting and say parliament has denied me the opportunity to speak. Yeah, if there is no hands. Then I'm happy too. But we should not intimidate others. You don't, eh eh, ah ah, ah ah, you don't do that, you don't do that. You are given opportunity to speak and you are allowed to speak. If there is somebody who want to speak, you cannot do that, you are not allowed. Please.
There is another mother here who raised, who raised her hand.
Arkuane. You, you, you have to allow people to speak. I'm taking, ki, ki, ki ma zoa, ki one, and two, everyone, three, everyone, four, everyone, five, six. These are last hands, rea twala.
When you come to the podium, don't repeat what other people have said.
Please, if, if you are going to repeat what other people have said, I'm going to stop you. And please, I think as, as South Africans, we have to tolerate one another. If you had your chance to speak and others have not been given time to speak, allow them to speak. What type of democracy will be building if we are intimidating one another, we cannot tolerate one another? Or are we, we are still going very far as Africans? So we are agreeing with these are the last hands. I'll start with Ma. Three minutes. Don't repeat what others have said, just add your views. And I've indicated when we started, if there are other issues that you can go and register there. Only those that are going to talk about the bill will be allowed to speak. If you sit here, you want to talk about your house that is collapsed and blah blah blah, please go and register there. Yes, let's start, Ma. Those that are speaking with the bill.
Lishen Skwaila, Waba Palabura Municipality, Imo Watuani. Billiere is supporter. Kibeki kubela, Bapalamente, ka elitli ka monu hori na hori. Nkele re re lintijemishumweye ya di RDP li, nka muka. Nkele tchokomele ba arri, ba arri ba arina. Banabamudimu baso kola, ba ochoa kule, ba tlo ba jela mishumomo nu. Monu re lo re ba tshani ti ba bereke, banabale ba mudimu. Aba, aba rendisilo, chelle tijebabate lo anki ba le ba, 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 ba du kontraka. Banabamudimu baso kola, ba ye bereke la butsho. Hori le re le reskarawele cha diya ba ba, banababamudimu ba tokasi. Le ba le ba o, 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 ba di, ba 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 arri ba le ba aran. Nkele ba ixe matro, nke ba konobona hori ba yali bo na. Baska ba re, ba ba kontraka bapate la ki bo na, enabi asitina. Mara ukre lo re ana se, asikiriya. Ntwe wengele ixe litro, le bo ne. Le re na, re na re langba, ba arri ba ba ri arre ji dinto ti. Re ixa se lo go lena. Nis kalar na, ki ka ba kalaini, ba le lisijewa tuwale, ba ntwe ya arilwe, le sa idi. Riaya wo, 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 wo makan sala ra, ra ixa di lo cha re na. Mara di di lo cha la, adi fiti ka pe la hori, ntwe pa le ile idi le juan juan. Ki lo cha re langa cho ne, di ixe matro di lo che, rea kubela, kla asinaki riya.
Good afternoon. My name is Lishen from Ward 1. I support the bill. I would like, I've got a request for parliament. Please take care of our, our builders. We know that big construction companies come into our areas and then they get all these con, these contracts. And then our brothers in the area are always subcontracting. And then they are abused by these big companies. They, they are not paid well. So they do not even earn enough. Please help in that regard. Thank you very much.
Torela, Lilalakaki Bones Homalaji from Ward 27, Greater Zanin Municipality. Ga ra community area na di RDP di arilwe, ba tu ba fe lo di man do. Wata da go hori, di RTPJ, jedi we.
Re re le re nyaga, sorry Ma, re re le re kubela ba tuwale la kama lau, teo. Re lo re u nyaga u complain na ka RDP, iyo u nyagi shamola. Di klo fitla more inatuluti. You don't have to talk.
I do complain. Di RTPJ we, alisa na ba du diga gar.
You complain, iyan lo u walam walam.
Naga culture mobile, from Greater Lethawa Municipality, Lethawa Municipality, Watere. So, naga supporta, ebele gia rejection. Gia, 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 gia supporta because, gdu sa hori, lo ba le, ba li abaro, re ma ede. Ele ba le ba ga na ba okuma na mu ye etah. E ba ga ba la matat, ba ka okuma na mu ye etah waro bo na. Ba konu, oru, ba jie garolo, uwa ini alindo ya jee. Vele gya ana, gia rejection. Gia rejection because, billia au na mu evoinchao. Oru na, ba shoba, varu, ele ba le ba sanjo shoma oze na la luji. Na vo chuliwa, gamu kuama le ba garre, azwar korapsheni ge kolo, ge yowu. So obokanya ga billie evoichor na, ele ba le Lethawa ya hori, ukuma ne, eh, eh ba shoba bole na ba ba aholindo. That's why ele le wele, erika bojok na ntwe ili ya. Re kenyara eklistu be ba shoba ma le ba, valoru, eh, ala, ala zebana na vo. Ele kungu bo na ba dolian tshua ma le. Yama Fela, eh, gamo South Africa, gnanargari, gbele Bapalamente ngai. Gamu South Africa rea ba ga livi wage, ya 3,500 rands.
He rejects and supports at the same time. One of the issues is that, eh, I hope that the poor, the poor people will get a stake or an opportunity in the building. And then throughout the building and the creation of these houses, relevant people will be contacted or, or, or contactable in the building of the houses. So that whatever mishaps that happen in the future, then all those things can be easy to resolve. Thank you. Yeah, we, we hear that there is a, a minimum wage of 3,500 rands here in South Africa. But we only, we are only paid 1,500 rands. Thank you.
Antala ngutakomplena la. Minna, mi janis kuanbana, nu ma eka huveni, ekreti azanini, eh, ni wale ni na ozi. Eh, lan tama koshka, me shaka ina. Unis tendere, sanga akwa, sanga temu akale, sanga panro baan. Estendere si, ebana ba vasko tusaka. Entuna ka ina, ya mkaanga, lo geru u zeni. Iba zela estendere si akuru, mi ta akarina. Ni minya ka, three months, kuru mi akala.
Ta deskuma, ni te, ni, ni, ba, ba, only people ba, 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 Bapalabula ebele le mula wanale. Bapalabula says, nina, nina, the issues, whether it's a complaint or it's a compliment or is it, it's something that you want to advise, please go to the table and, and register those issues.
Okay, ingo mu. Minna, minna, Ma Thagana, Walikriti Zanini. Eh, ka White 25, ka councilor Brown Michelle, anus tevi ko. No ba na shubutis. Like, na kuche ko, ma councilor aba ina, ba dezavati, kunyikewa ti ndo tingan. Like, eh, mkanzela ra me na una, 540 village. So lo, aru na 540 village. Last, un fonire la, akame, nukumbela u, ufamba utzala, mi ti me inga rekinati. Ayinlo. Aku utzala only two, ka 540 village. So anu la kuche ka ku. Ma councilor aba ina ba dezavati, kunyikewa ti ndo tingan, kozdo, ungenala, next do utzala. Obonanaala, next do ku, ku, ku ngarna ayinlo, like, unga stusi ku sofano endane. So, shubutsa sha mina kro shada shoku, ka lela ba dezavati, kunyikewa ti ndo tingan. Ingo mu.
My name is Ma Thagana, from the Greater Zanin Municipality. My question is, how many houses should our councillors be allocated? This is because the last time my councillor sent me to go around and check the families that need houses, but said only get two, eh, houses of families per village. While actually the councillor is responsible for five villages. So how many houses should a councillor be allocated? Thank you.
Kala bo ra. Lilalakaki Johanesenzo from Marunil Municipality, Ward 6, Marugleni Municipality. Ki klo ba kela bo ra, e Bapalamente are shu teu, gbele itilemo. Ki klo balela ka bill, eki ya mu re la. Billie eki ba la karu, itu rtu shaka ku. Agololoka ro na la hakani ro ka ma ta kaga ra gata ba ya, ya dinto. Go na le ba tu sheba, ba tu ba, ba u nyagi shite dinto. Ke ba u nyagi shen toje, intoje la li plu suichiwa. Aesalia ola beneficiary, ba ifa umu. The next time, eh, ndoela ya kaga u nyagi shite ku ya pruvile, aijuele. Weta, billie bi na ku, inu ku ba bi atemweyewu. Eh, ba mu jago re, ndoela ya kuwa ya juele. Mu tola uno xala, aditu go nu mu, go dimu ga mu kukuku nu. Le lo honu, na le ba tu ba inti ba ne lo re ba aso kola, intoje ba na di suichi. A, a, aesali ja bo on, ena, uha na ga la, ke ba u nyagi shabare, we na ona le ndo. Kibeki kubela hori, kina kote ba na Bapalamente, egar tu shabi angore. Matadama kutu, asel, asel, oba asel di shu galaba ka la hori. Go na le matadama inti ba, tu ba inti ba sa du la mi kukuku, ba u nyagi shadi ndo, bar di ndo ja ba na di juile. Aguna, karabo e positifile lo re ya fotofacha.
Thank you. Oru. Thank you, Pa. Ewe, e wadi si emola.
Thank you very much. My name is Johanesenzo. I'm very happy that parliament is here today to, to bring this bill to, to the people. I accept, I agree with the bill. I think that this bill is going to, to help us a lot. Because we have challenges now where people register for houses and then these houses are swapped. They are given to, to other beneficiaries, people who, who were at the back of the queue. And then now, eh, eh, it's, it's, it becomes difficult for these people to, to receive their houses. And when they go to try re-register, they are told that their houses have already been allocated and then they continue staying in checks. That's the problem that I wish can be resolved. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We want to thank you for, eh, your inputs. Even those that who have not given them time to speak their problem or challenges or compliments or whatever, we have sent them to the table. But we want to indicate that the team there is going to compile a report. And the report will be table to this committee and the committee will adopt it as its own program. Everything that has said here will be followed up. But there are issues that were raised, eh, on the bill. How the bill is going to assist small holder contractors? How the bill, eh, is going to make sure that people who are building houses, they are being monitored and all those other things that were being raised. Eh, we have Mr. Ngwenya from the Department, eh, of Human Settlement, who's responsible for drafting the bill, not allocating houses or doing any other thing. I'm going to allow him to respond and explain further what the bill is going to do to make sure that we don't encounter some of the issues that you have raised. And with him, we have Mr. Tepo Ram, Ramala, eh, of NHBRC, which is, eh, the council that is going to regulate, the council that is regulate, is going to regulate the building environment in the, in the country. They are here to, to tell you where you can get them, how do you register yourself as a, as a meselanari, to be trained, to be converted, to so that you get skill. So I'm going to give them, eh, five minutes, eh, both of them to, to, to give us those answer. Mr. Ngwenya?
Thank you very much Chair and honourable members, including the public at large. Thank you very much Chair and honourable members, once again. Chairperson, I'll address two important related objectives relating to the bill. The first important fundamental element of the bill, Chair, it relates to the purpose of this particular bill. And in particular targeting the main function, what is the main function and the purpose of the NHBRC? To simplify the matter, Chair, is that I want the community to know that the main function of the NHBRC is to ensure the quality and the structural integrity of any home in South Africa. And they are doing that by way even of providing the inspectors for them to inspect the house before any person take occupation of any house in South Africa. But the other critical point, Chair and honourable members, is that the, the, the home builders and the contractors, they need to make sure that they enroll whatever the houses or any construction, you know, construction project that they are doing. And why they have to enroll that particular project is because, is to the benefit of the consumer. The benefit of the consumer is that, once the house, like many of you have raised the issue that, once you build an RDP house within the period of less than four years, then it shows the cracks and also there are also roof leaks. Now the NHBRC has got what you call the warranty cover. Now it covers for the period of five years for a structural defect. If there is any defect in terms of your own home or the house that have been built by the contractor who's enrolled, then you are covered. And it also extend the cover for the roof leak for the period of two years. So if the house, you know, be before the period of two years and before the period of five years is got structural defect and a roof leak, then you don't have a problem. You must go back to the NHBRC to come and fix and also to chase that contractor who have done that particular workmanship. So don't worry about any other structural defect of the RDP houses because the act itself, Chair and honourable members, it mandates, it puts an obligation on both the MEC and also the MMC responsible for both human settlement in the province and in the municipality to ensure that all of our projects, human settlement, are enrolled. And a failure for them, for both of them to enroll this particular project is an offence in terms of the act. Lastly, honorable Chair members and the community, I want to inform you that the issue that relating to the inspectors, we have emphasized it in terms of the bill as I was drafting the bill. If you look at the provision of section seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two, we'll need also to intensify the particular provision to make, of course, a liability that rests on the inspectors when if you fail to inspect, you know, the project and within the period of less than five years, those particular project is show some cracks and a roof leak. Lastly, Chair, with regard to the issue of the provision of the training, it is provided for in terms of the act. And with regard to issue that relating to empowerment of the small contractors, it is there in terms of the act. It gives an obligation to the NHBRC to train them. And therefore, Chairperson, we'll make sure that when you deal with the regulations, when I draft the regulations, then we are already actually dealing with that particular matter. Thank you very much. With regard to any other matters, Chairperson, I'm persuaded with regard to issue that relating to access in terms of the fees that we have to pay and in terms of the penalties that people have complained about. Thank you very much, Chair and honorable members.
NHBRC?
Thank you very much, Chair, and good afternoon, honorable members.
Indeed, my name is Tepo. I'm from NHBRC, Limpopo.
And the previous speaker has outlined our mandate as NHBRC, but just to be brief and emphasize on the issues he has raised. We are mandated to regulate the home building industry and to protect the interest of the housing consumers, being the beneficiary in the subsidy sector. And all the issues that you have raised, we have made notes of those. And to a certain extent, I'm very disappointed because I know reverberate very closely the traditional leaders, ward councillors and local municipalities. Really carefully empower the information and the services shared offering as NHBRC, which are very critical to you.
Trying to give you the information and empower you about the services that we as NHBRC deliver.
I didn't want to be long. Could I emphasize a car? Two matters, being the general poor workmanship that you spoke about, but also an element of corruption. But the previous speaker spoke about the inspectors that are mandated on a daily basis to ensure that indeed the workmanship that the contractor did are they are of technical set standards. And indeed, we are very much lucky, Rena, in the province because all our subsidy houses, RDP houses, our department enrolled them. They ensure before they start, they come to us for assessment and they are enrolled.
We are very much fortunate, Rena, my trusty coward. Each and every house that is being subsidized, it is being listed and it is also being enrolled.
Meaning, they are covered under the warranty cover, yeah, NHBRC?
They are covered under the eight-year NHBRC.
It is because renali three months maintenance defect, renali one year roof leak, renali five years of major structural defect.
When I say this sentence, Smith, it's because of the fact that we've got three months.
Maintenance defect.
Maintenance defect.
One year roof leak.
One year.
And five years of major structural defect. And it seems, Okari, you are not aware. And it is the obligation of the contractors to go back and rectify these houses or these defects that you are identifying from the date of occupation. Because Rena, I've made some notes of the projects, example, your gravel lot. We'll try to look into those issues. But the fact of the matter is that if they are still within the warranty period of major structural defect. But I had, Okari, no, but a bunch issues that were raised, even the roof leak and maintenance defect. But I don't want to, Okari, kill that capelli. If there are any issues that you want to raise that has to do with the work. We'll make sure, Renes NHBRC, that verify or are this project still within the warranty cover? And if it is that the case, and to give a little example, you have to move over there. Contractors. Like any other state-owned entity, we have zero tolerance. Parliament is trusting the crooks.
Just to sum it up, we have zero tolerance.
If one of our employees, inspector, be anybody, only suspect anger, Okari, or any relationship with the contractors, we will deal with that issue.
So when I talk to you, Nomoro, you just take the phone. We're going to give you a telephone number. You are just going to take your phone and call that number and you don't really necessarily have to say your name. We are going to give you our contacts. We are also going to give you our addresses. But the other one is in Zanin. The nearest one is in Zanin. I thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ngwenya and Mr. Ramala. There are issues that you have raised which Parliament unfortunately cannot assist you immediately. I'll answer as I've indicated. Parliament, you will take all the issues that we raised and call your executive council, the MEC of Limpopo. I'll appear in Parliament next week, I think. We'll be saying in Ward Three or Ward Six or Ward, 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 there is this issue and then we'll follow them up to make sure that you get response. The issue of land, land is allocated by municipality. I think we will engage municipality and the provincial government to unlock the land as most of the people who were making inputs, they were requesting that. There are those that have raised on the changing of names on the beneficiary list and all those things. Minister came to Parliament and made commitment that he's going to digitalize the beneficiary list so that as your councillor register your name in the system, the name will never disappear and all of us, even including us as Parliament, will have that list. There are those that are, you are saying they are renting houses of RDP. These houses, as we build for, as they have been built for yourself, it's not yours for eight years. If you want to rent it or do other thing or sell it, one, you are not allowed to rent these houses within eight years because it's not yours. It's still government house. In terms of the act, even if you want to sell that house after eight years, the point of interest is government. So it's important that we understand these issues and what committees, I'm happy that majority of your what committees, please request workshop on the Housing Act so that you are able to assist your communities when some of these issues are happening. Somebody said he wanted to understand what is Parliament. Parliament is you. We are your representative. So that's why all the time you'd have members of Parliament as we pass legislation, as we implement the program, will come back to you. So it's important that you understand that you are the ones that vote and put us in power, in these positions. Therefore, you are Parliament. We are accountable to you. That's why Parliament has got, each and every member of Parliament has got a constituency office everywhere. So when you see any constituency office, go inside and register your problem. Because as members were forwarded to Parliament by political parties, sometimes you find that my office is painted ANC. And then you have a member of the maypower and his constituency office is painted blue. And then you have my mom who told his office will be painting red. And then you get intimidated that you don't want to go into that because you belong to, you love or you support or you associate yourself with the particular party. Those staff that are inside those offices are working for Parliament. So you can go there and raise your issue and your issue would then be taken by the member to Parliament. So it's important to understand that. Constituency offices, even though it's attached to political parties, but are not meant for political party member only. The last issue, it's on the, those houses that the Nyaope people are you are saying they are staying there because there is no allocation. I think Mr. Ngwenya and Mr. Ramala, before you leave here, you must take those issues. You must attend to it with immediate effect. Yeah, those are the issues that I thought I must. Oh, the last one is the issue of the beneficiary. There was an issue of child-headed families who are not get assisted. The minister came to Parliament and made commitment that the beneficiary list must prioritize child-headed families. People who People with disability. And elderly. So if there is any beneficiary list that does not make those people to queue on the long list, it's wrong. So we, 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 we will go, we are going to take it up with the minister, with the minister and the MECs responsible for human settlement. So, um, unfortunately, the speaker has left here because I, I wanted this message to reach municipality because councillors are the ones that develop priority beneficiary list on the ground. So the, the other issue on the, there was a question that if you had an RDP house and then you get disability, um, what happened because you not, you get, you now use the wheelchair, you will not get, um, you will not get into your house. Eh, Mr. Ramala or Ngwezi, what, what, what can be done? If a person has got an RDP, eh, get disabled, the door that we have built is, eh, doesn't accommodate wheelchair. What should happen? Quickly, Mr. Ramala?
This check. Eh, we, 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 as government, we need to be compassionate and, and indeed, this, this government is empath. Eh, if the application is made through municipality to the provincial department, I think they should be have a budget, eh, to address those type of issues. But also Department of Social Development, I think can also assist, but I thought maybe Mr. Ngwenya will clarify it, but.
Um, yeah, I, I, I want you to take it as a homework because it doesn't feature in the act. Eh, if the, but if a, a person, of course, those that will be enrolled with yourself and get disability within the timeframe that you put in the act will be covered automatically. But those that already, eh, maybe the house has got twenty years, yes, through social development, they should be able to get assisted, eh, to make the door bigger to accommodate the wheelchair. In that note, we want to take this opportunity to thank you very much on behalf of Parliament of the Republic of South Africa, which is on behalf of yourselves. Um, there are food that has been prepared for yourselves. You don't have to go and queue. The protection services of Parliament will show, will come to your seat and tell you where you must go. So I'm going to request a volunteer from yourself. To come and close this meeting with a prayer.
Hello?